It is now seven o'clock. Shelby City Council is called to order. Please, gentlemen, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Cutlet?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Here.
I'm now entertaining a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal from February the 5th, 2024.
A move?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin to dispense with the reading of the journal from February 5th, 2024. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
That motion passes. Now, come to the time for public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment to council uh, receiving concerning an issue or perhaps a piece of legislation to come on the floor later, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and let's take your calls.
I'm Bishop Anthony Cooper, 219 West Main Street, Shelby Isle. I'd like to reserve time for uh, order point.
Any other? Hearing none, this thing done. We'll move forward then to reports from standing special committees. Finance, the Personal Committee, Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. As kind of customary around appropriations, but we do not have a formal meeting, but I did want to touch on just a couple of things. Uh, the general fund has a cash balance as of January 31st of 1.7 million. Less encoverances, 1.4 million. Uh, and uh, all the other items we have, because of the early juncture, there's no real trend lines that we can see at that time. Uh, but I did want to enter that uh, into the record along with uh, fact that our uh, cash on hand treasury is at 14,117,945. Uh, and with that, I would move that the combined financial statement and cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated January 31st, 2024, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city website.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated January 31st, 2024, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city website. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Yay.
Mr. Robb?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
That motion passes. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And so if there are any questions, of course, uh, Mr. Crum will be giving his report, and sure he'll touch on a couple of things, but that's my report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Utilities and Streets Committee, Councilman McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I give a quick report on the City of Council, the whole?
Yes, of course.
Okay. So I'll start out with the, the City Council, the whole met this past Saturday, 7:10 in February, 8:00 AM to about 11:30. We discussed the 2024 appropriations specifically to utilities. We will meet again this Saturday, 8 till noon, for the second half of our annual meeting, which will include police and fire at that time. So now, unless there's any questions, I'll go into utility and streets.
Yeah, police and fire and the rest of the general fund, of course. Yep. Any questions or comments on the council, uh, committee at all meeting? All right. Now, I'll move to the Utilities and Streets Committee.
And the reason I wanted to do that first is because within our committee, the whole Saturday, we did discuss most of this, so I'm gonna abbreviate this. But, so the Utilities and Streets Committee met February 16th, from 2 to 3 o'clock. And then the limit of this report is the City Council, the whole, discuss much or most of this report for this past Saturday. Uh, again, the street paving projects for 2024 include West Smiley Avenue, Glenwood Drive, East Madison Avenue, East Gaylord Avenue, East Maxwell Drive, Independence Drive, and Seneca Drive. The estimated paving cost is 485,000. Next item, Mickey Road reconstruction update. The reconstruction of Mickey Road from Mansellwood Avenue to South Campbell Street would install storm sewer, under drains, curbs, gutters, drive aprons, and pavement. The estimated project costs $3,810,000, which will be cost split 80/20. The city's contribution, 762,000, and the estimated federal state contribution, 3,048,000. Cities' projected cost in 2024 for this year, 61,000 for engineering fees. Estimated construction begin date is fourth quarter 2027, and the construction end date estimated is quarter 3, 2028. On a side note, the admin is working on a strategic plan to place a temporary surface coat on Mickey Road. And then finally, what I want to touch on is the surveillance project update. The final step is installing cameras and setup on the network. The anticipated completion date is April. Camera locations will be Blackwater Commons Park, LeBride Park, Grable Park, Seltzer Park North, Seltzer Park South, Veterans Park, and then both Reservoirs 2 and 3. That's all for my report today, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman McGlaughlin. Are there any uh, comments or questions in regard to his reports? Hearing none, we'll move forward then. Safety Committee, Councilman Roberts did not meet. The next official portion along the agenda is a report of city officials, uh, the report of the mayor. For the past couple of weeks, I've been occupied with the typical mayor of all duties and delights. On the 6th of February, took part in our monthly Board of Health staff meeting. On February the 7th, enjoyed the good company of any of our community partners at the Richland Area Chamber and Economic Development Annual Dinner. I'm so pleased to see our own Lloyd Rebar recognized as one of the three economic excellence awardees in Richland County. So congratulations to Jared and Lindsay Mahor and their hardworking team. On the 8th, I participated in the Zoom meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Community Action Commission of Erie, Huron, and Richland County. On the 9th, we held a delightful ribbon cutting for Whispering Little Way, another unique downtown business located at 41 East Main Street. And then on the 10th, I attended a truly riveting press conference where our own detective, Adam Turner, revealed his findings of assaulting a missing persons case which originated in 1945. So that was uh, kudos to Detective Turner for his fine work. And uh, so if you ever know anybody that's missing, you know the guy, Turner, too. He, he even find him a band, but I can't, so. That's my report for now, gentlemen. Are there any questions or comments for me? Hearing none? Oh, under my report, let's continue. Under my report, there's several uh, confirmations after the uh, motion of a request of a liquor permit hearing. So uh, let's move to that uh, that first order on motion to request. Mr. Martin?
Move to request liquor permit hearing for SAL Acquisition 1 LLC, DBA Shelby State Lot, 23 East Whitney Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts to request a liquor hearing, uh, permit hearing rather for SAL Acquisition 1 LLC, doing business at Shelby State Lot, 23 East Whitney Avenue. Discussion, Mr. Martin? Notice that the ownership of the State Lot has changed hands. Uh, so this is a transfer regarding that, as you can see on the front page here. Yes, sir. Any other discussion? This is on a motion to request. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Crum?
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
That motion requests a permit hearing. Pardon us. Mr. Martin?
Uh, I move to postpone the confirmation of Sue Schenberger to the Community Improvement Corporation.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McGlaughlin to postpone uh, the confirmation of appointment of Sue Schenberger to the CIC. Discussion. Mr. Martin?
Uh, there is uh, some questions about uh, the, the number of seats, et cetera, et cetera. We just have a couple of questions. They're procedural, uh, nothing to do with uh, the appointment itself.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone this appointment? Or confirmation of this appointment? And roll call, please.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
That motion to postpone passes. Mr. Martin?
Uh, I move to confirm, confirm the appointments of Stacy Gunder, Brian Crum, Evan Montgomery, and Cody Cross uh, to their respective uh, appointments.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts uh, to confirm the appointments uh, to their respective positions of Stacy Gunder, Brian Crum, Evan Montgomery, and Cody Cross. Discussion, Mr. Martin?
I have no issue with the first three, but would like to consider the appointment of Cody Cross as a separate piece of business.
Mr. Martin?
Um, I withdraw my motion, Mayor, and I uh, remotion to confirm the appointments of Stacy Gunder, Brian Crum, and Evan Montgomery to their respective positions.
You have a second, Mr. Roberts? So we have uh, a new motion then, uh, by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts uh, for the confirmations of Stacy Gunder, Brian Crum, and Evan Montgomery. So that is the motions on the floor to confirm those first three appointments. Everyone understanding that, right? And a discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Those uh, confirmations, our appointments are confirmed. Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Move to confirm the appointment of Cody Cross to the position of Superintendent of Electricity and Communications Department.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for confirmation of Mr. Cody Cross to the position of Superintendent of Electric, Electricity and Communications Department. Discussion. Mr. Robb?
I move the council go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, or compensation of a public official.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robb and a second by Mr. Martin to bend the executive session for the purpose so red by Mr. Robb. Discussion. Mr. Robb?
I would ask you the motion passes that uh, yourself, Mr. Ensmann, and Mr. Oyster accompany us.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Nay.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutlet?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
That motion passes, run executive session at 7:13.
Anthony Cooper. Uh, actually, it's in the water. There was Shelby Lot Church in the end. I appointed a new pastor there, so we have also changed, and we moved everything.
That's right. I'll state that on the record.
Yeah, yeah.
In case I disappeared or something.
Yes, yes.
All like they did want.
Give her a call.
Turner.
That's right.
Getting much sleep today, hey?
Yeah, just happy to get there. Last week's been a little bit tough and I think he had so much cold stuff. But people don't have any punch on me, it gives. And you feel bad because you know how much as an adult you hate. Sorry, this is cold. But no, I mean, we started to sleep together. Pretty good chunks of sleep, so I'm just cautiously, cautiously optimistic, or cautiously grateful that it didn't last for a little bit.
That's right.
Before changing.
And then sleep training, because if you don't, they will. They get you. I made that mistake for being not sleep trained well. It was ugly for a while. The boys, I took, I took a night with Kelly Breen to visit Kelly's sister. I was at the time, they were eight or nine months old. Why they, I went out, I waxed my car after I put them to bed. And when I came back in, they were still crying. So I went out there for the second coat. You know what, the next day, they, they did cry for another probably twenty-five minutes or something like that, but after that, they were good. So you just, it's, it's a painful experience.
Dude, yeah.
Remember sitting out all day.
Right. My sister turns someone out of my news right now, like introducing her, like, you're not gonna sleep in this. At least needs some quiet time in the room. So then my sister, she washed her place out for forty-five minutes on Monday the other day, and she fell asleep on the floor of the room. So we don't wanna wake her, you know, she was just on the floor, don't wake it, she was fell asleep.
Jimmy still doesn't like to sleep. He's, he's four now. He's paying to.
Oh, thank you.
I'm telling him no.
Yeah.
Oh, my wife takes it off.
That's not bad at all.
She does.
Hello, Jack.
Mrs.
All that's worth is only forty-nine. Drop dead, we gotta get disappeared for you.
Shall I turn this back on?
Yes, sir. All right, council comes out of executive session at seven thirty, six. Today with a discussion on motion to confirm the appointment of Cody Croce to the position superintendent. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin, yea. Mr. Robb?
I'm going next, Dan.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Cutler?
Yea.
Mr. Mark?
Yea.
A motion passed, thank you. All right, now we move to Mr. Crum as director of financial reports.
Thank you, sir. Nothing overly exciting. Procreation's have really consumed my life for the last several weeks. And thank you all for joining me last Saturday. For joining me again this Saturday. I do appreciate everybody's hard work so far through the process. I would like to say if, if anybody has any last minute, hey, we should maybe consider adding this or that, be it in the administrative work, council. I'd love to hear it, you know, in the next day or so, so that way I can kind of get some projections for you guys on Saturday. So that's, that's the largest thing with me. The, the state auditors here doing our annual audit, and that's coming along. Income taxes are starting to come in. Just a reminder to residents, April fifteenth is the deadline to either file or extend your tax returns as well as first quarter estimates. So if you're talking to anybody about taxes, please let them know that. That serves all I am.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crum. Any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? If not, move forward then to Mr. Gordon Ice, for finance report, sir. Joe Geis, project coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. Top of their engineer is finalizing the painting project. He's finalizing the plans for the curb ramps, so we'll have that at the first meeting in March for approval. The building at fifty fifty-two in East Main Street, the one that burned, talked to the contractor today. He's hoping to get in next week and start that process. He's actually gonna shore up the wall in between the eagles in that building to help protect that building. The small figure, normal demolition, it'll be a lot of handwork because of the wood color everything is and so forth. So hopefully by next meeting, we'll see some action on that and just start our normal stuff.
Mr. Geis? Any comments or questions for Mr. Geis in regard to his report? Here he comes. Move forward to new business, is there any new business to be brought before council's seat? Move forward to unfinished business? Purple Heart, the trail? Mr. McLaughlin, anything?
Well, the only thing is, we continue to do research, specifically Rich Iker, on the case. And keeps finding folks that have earned the Purple Heart. So I think it, it includes more than just the city of Shelby, you know, because he's reviewing the Shelby Davy Globe information, obituaries and all, so which includes folks from the area, time over time. So he's making lists for the area as well. So he's up to about a hundred and eighty-eight folks that have received that award.
Impressive. We are working on the signs then, so we'll try and get those here soon as we can. Would you move forward with the posting of the assignment, kind of a little bit of ceremony with that? And then unfinished business? Uh, move forward to the next session, Mr. Crum.
Ordinance number one, two thousand twenty-four. Enacting chapter eight hundred and fifty-eight of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, sale of cannabis, and declaring an emergency.
Is that the rules requiring that ordinance be read on three separate occasions to be suspended? Point one, because I believe I, we already did this motion and then we postponed it. So I do not believe we have to do this motion again.
I agree. So we'll move then to the passes of ordinance.
The ordinance we're taking up pass?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. McLaughlin, I'm sorry, Mr. Martin, for the passing of ordinance number one, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion?
This is Anthony Cooper. The nineteen West Main Street, Shelby, Ohio. I am here to basically to lend support and encouragement to vote yes on the ordinance. I represent several pastors in town as well, that make matters in Wrisland County. You have, should have received information basically recently to you hopefully concerning basically the economic and social cost of legalizing marijuana. And I'm not gonna go into a whole lot, but just for records, people do understand that now by looking through the Colorado Christian University, Colorado has done this. They come to find out for every dollar that they make, it costs them four dollars fifty cents in revenue to be able to resuscitate, take care of all the problems that comes from this. And so myself personally, as I started looking at this and did research into it, I am thankful that we have a mayor and have a city council that are looking out for our city, that's looking out for our young people, our children. And I encourage you to vote yes and to keep our city safe. So thank you very much, and gentlemen, I appreciate the work that you do. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. Martin?
Yes, I actually have some questions. The, we have the exhibit A, this is actually a question for the law director. So in the prohibition section of exhibit A, sorry, very candid, prohibition activity says no person shall operate as an adult use cannabis operator within the city of Shelby. All well and good, so they will go to the definition of what that means, and it covers the, it says it means a level-one adult use, a level-two adult use, and a level-three adult use cultivator, an adult use processor, and an adult use dispensary. Question I have is in the definitions, this would be on a, I don't know if it's on page, I don't know if it's on this question. After it lists the definition of level-one adult, level-two adult, level-three adult use cultivator, it says level-one cultivator and level-two cultivator. Then I was thinking that maybe that's just a, an additional term used for the other two, but they, they relate to completely different chapters in the revised code than are up in nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one specifically. So my question is, should twenty-two and twenty-three be listed under the definition of adult use cannabis operator? Or do they need to be listed as prohibited activities separate in the prohibition clause?
I don't know that I follow that. I'm prepared to answer that at this moment. I haven't thoroughly reviewed this.
Let me ask it differently, I guess. Is the law director satisfied that the prohibitions within the prohibited activity section are sufficient to ensure that someone does have a loophole to come in our community with dispensary? I mean, I guess at the end of the day, we can pass this and we can come back and adjust the definitions as we need to later on, but...
Well, I guess if it makes you feel better, we could just say adult use cannabis operators are prohibited in the city of Shelby, Ohio. Just strike the, everything before the period of the column. Or you could add pursuant to thirty-seven eighty and thirty-seven ninety-six. I'm following you. I don't have the cross-reference of thirty-seven eight twenty-five A, which may include thirty-seven ninety-six, which is why I'm not prepared to answer this question tonight.
I got you.
Do I gain cross-reference of?
Well, I'm certainly satisfied past this, and if we need to make an amendment, have the recommendation of the law director later. But that's, those are the, really the only questions I've had. And the only other question I have, this is more of a, a general legal question. Under penalty, says each day's continued violation shall constitute a separate offense. Is that, is that fairly typical language for this type of thing?
Well, it's all new language, there's nothing typical. But I think when somebody's trying to operate a business, that's kind of taken in a different sense each day. If they are effective, that's, you charge them every day. Yes. No double jeopardy claims. I don't know. Thank you, Mayor.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Cutler?
Yea.
Mr. Mark?
Yea.
Ordinance number one, two thousand twenty-four, passes.
Resolution number five, two thousand twenty-four. Accepting the gift of an original copy of the proposed charter for Shelby, Ohio, from Garland John Gates to the city of Shelby.
Who the resolution should we take on pass? Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. McLaughlin, for the passing of resolution five, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion? Mr. Crum?
I do have a copy of the, like, have the original document here that he's put in the binder for safety, I think it'll be binding this.
A piece of history. Further discussion? Mr. Cutler?
I would just like to thank Mr. Garland Gates for giving us, us this piece of history and ensuring that it will be protected. and ensuring that it will be protected amongst the city.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Cutler?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Resolution number five, two thousand twenty-four passes.
Resolution number six, two thousand twenty-four. Approving weed assessments as issued by the Director of Public Service. Will the resolution be taken and passed?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin, for the passage of resolution number six, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion? Mr. Martin?
I certainly appreciate the finance director putting these together, so we can get these out. And just for the laypeople who are listening, this has nothing to do with the one.
I was hoping no one would say that.
Completely. Yeah, different things. Maybe.
Correct.
Most likely.
Any further serious discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Cutler?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Resolution number six, two thousand twenty-four passes.
Resolution number seven, two thousand twenty-four. Authorizing the mayor as Director of Public Service to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Safe and Health School Program through the Ohio Department of Transportation and the execute contracts as required and the current emergency.
Will the resolution be taken and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Roberts, for the passage of resolution number seven, two thousand twenty-four. Discussion? Mr. Geist?
Thank you, Mayor. Rachel Payne came to the school district administration and myself and said there are bodies available for this and there's some money out there. So if you, for those who are around, it was back in two thousand twelve, we did a school travel plan. That's obviously now all changed since all of our schools are in one campus. So this, what this will do is, is the city can apply or conjunction with the school district to get a school travel plan done. So once the school travel plan is done, the items that are listed in that school travel plan is what you can apply for for further funding for implementation. So for instance, there's infrastructure items, there's items that the school educational license do, and other things or activities for the school. So we took our school travel plan last time. The improvements at the Smiling Gable intersection, we didn't get, we didn't use safety rock for school funds, but we got safety funds to go out for that project. So that was one of the items that was listed on there. We did accomplish a bunch of other ones during our painting project, the sign and so forth. But this is the document that we can use to get further funding.
Thank you. And any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Cutler?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Resolution number seven, two thousand twenty-four passes. I've come to the task for miscellaneous business, is there any miscellaneous business that you brought before council? Mr. Martin? Mayor, move council adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yea.
Mr. Robb?
Yea.
Mr. Roberts?
Yea.
Mr. Cutler?
Yea.
Mr. Martin?
Yea.
Motion passes, council adjourned at seven fifty two, fifty-three, make it. Seven fifty-three. Any gentlemen?